All right, I'd like to call this special open meeting of the Board of Education on November 6, 2025, to order at 6:30 PM. I may have a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. All right, first up, we have work session items, our board budget directive, the first read. And so. I don't know if anyone has any thoughts they want to start with Dr. Jameson, I don't know if you.
I do, actually, before we hop right in, I do just want to thank our community, our staff for their efforts as it relates to our latest annual performance report. MRH is second in the state out of approximately 533 districts. We earn 98.5% of the points allocated out of 200. And we are first in the St. Louis County region. We were second in the state to a K A charter, so we are first out of all of the remaining K 12 school districts. And this is not possible, of course, without the vision of the board and also the efforts of our teacher staff and everyone who contributes to the work that ensures that either kids get to school, they have adequate nutrition to enter the classroom to eat and are able to either focus mentally or receive support. So just wanted to say thank you to our community and also thank you to our families and our partners for entrusting their children and also serving within our community because it contributes greatly to the academic success and outcomes of our kids. So wanted to jump straight in. Brian, thank you for sending over those items. I didn't want to make changes to the actual agenda, so hopefully it's okay to the board. I just dropped his feedback down into the document that I'm showing and then I can make adjustments as you give feedback. So annually, the board gives administration directives in regards to how to allocate funds. This actual budget directive is being prepared for the fiscal year 27. From the October meeting, I attempted to take the feedback from the board and coalesced into the items that were shared and also what was already included from the previous year's board directive. So I'm pulling it up here. Item one, I did not receive any feedback, so that one did not require any changes. But item two, for the academic gap closing programs for marginalized and unrepresented groups. Brian sent some feedback back and I wanted to give an opportunity for the board to react to it. And then also, Brian, if you have any questions in regards to what additional resources that we need as a district to support those marginalized groups, I'm more than happy to share those items as well.
Yeah, I think my own, my comment was, I know this was from last year's budget directive as well, and we did follow through on that with some major investments in some new curriculum. And I'm just was wondering if there's not new programs, new curriculum needed, maybe this doesn't need to be a budget directive for next year.
So that's a great question. So when I meet with the principals and we look at data, what we are finding is that there are additional needs that we didn't purchase that comes along with the resource that we purchased. So for example, met with Dr. Stansel and also Mr. Zitzer this, this week. And they both indicated that there are some pieces that would actually make the lift easier for teachers, that specifically to the middle school. And then also there are some additional needs that the ECC noted as well. So that's part of it. And the other piece just highlighting some of the things that were surfaced through the elementary school. Currently, when we think about our multi-tiered systems of support, we have our universal. So the instructional resources that we just purchased are for everyone, but we still have students at tier two who need additional support who are being pulled out, that we have not necessarily found any intervention resources and materials to support them when they are in those intervention classrooms or working with the reading specialists. We have not yet identified what those items are. Those are conversations that are occurring in the curriculum meetings with Dr. McGee and also meetings with the principals, Dr. McGee and also his curriculum committee.
So I guess, so based on that, would it be what we're doing is we're dedicating resources to supplement the existing curriculum so that we can address the achievement gaps? Is sort of that in a nutshell?
Yes, and so.
It's not that we're like creating new. We're not, it's not like a new program. We're just using our existing and sort of supplementing it with other resources that are available to help different groups of students.
Correct. And so those come at an additional cost. So when we purchase the resources for both ELA and math, we did not purchase those pieces. And I will say it's not because we didn't think they were beneficial, but I think as the teachers are having an opportunity to interact with the new resource, they're seeing that there are some needs that would benefit the kids and also benefit them as they prepare the lessons for students to receive.
Yeah, I, I sort of am feeling the same way as can we be more specific about what the goal is, you know? Are we trying to supplement in existing programs? I mean, if we put some language like that in there, it would make more sense to me. The, the way that it reads right now, it's just, it's very general.
Yeah, and I guess Trent, that like. You know, maybe even stepping back a moment is a question for the board about how, how do we want to use this budget directive, the budget directive? You know, looking back over years and years of budget directives that I've been involved in, I mean, some of them have from, you know, the early days, like, you know, 15 items in them, you know, there, there historically has been a lot. I think, you know, the past few years, we have refined it down to a few broader priorities. And. You know, I, I am just, you know, again, continue to be wanting to give clear and specific direction around, you know, this is obviously not supposed to get down to like the line item budgeting, which we get to much later. Do, is this something we want every budget item to be able to tie back to? Do we want this to just be something that like directs big purchases? Is this something we want administrators just to kind of have in mind and to try to achieve? You know, I, I don't, I don't know that we've like fully grappled with that.
Yeah, well, I, I think that the budget directive should be things that you plan, you, you would like to change your spending or increase spending in the next year, something that you want to do differently than you have done in the past. That's, that's the way I see a budget directive.
Is it possible to have the budget directive work like we, we use the strategic plan when we do stuff, say, okay, this, this item is tied to this portion of our budget directive in that it, you know, this, it, it's. You know, helping achieve our closing academic gaps or in which case we probably need a more detailed one, or if you wanted to just keep it as sort of a, a general. Um, open document so that we have flexibility. I mean, I think that those are two ways to look at it. I think that the first option probably gets y'all or gets us to a more stringent kind of wrangling of the budget. And the second one just allows to say like, okay, well, I, I feel like there's, there's more room to sort of just throw stuff in if it's general. So I do see the danger of, of having a general document, but. I don't know, that's, that's just my thought.
Yeah, or building on that, Josh, is it more exploratory, right? So it's like saying, here's the areas that we'd like to see administration explore extra spend that we could possibly build into the budget, right? Or in our entrenched piece, like what we change out. So if these supplemental pieces are something that they want, you know, let's, let's see what they cost and build it in, right? And so we're giving, we're giving the directive that we'd like to see what that is so that we could possibly add it.
Yeah, I, how you just worded it, Julie, that if we could reword this along those lines, I think that would be helpful. We'd like to explore the possibility of, because we want to give the teachers, I mean, within reason of our revenue possibilities, give them all the resources they need to, to use these new math curriculum, new ELA curriculum. And if there's gaps in there and they need some additional resources, absolutely. I think it just if we could specify something along the lines of what you're just saying would be helpful.
May, may I ask a question for clarity? So like when we get, I think going back to what Katie mentioned, so when we get with the schools and dependent on the independent needs of their building, their buildings and also students, it. It, it is limiting when we specifically name the things, but when we keep it broad and say supplemental resources, because when I start bringing the preliminary budget, we will already say this is what we can afford. So when we think about the items that we're discussing, so we already know that the teachers will get a sizable raise, I've already completed the calculations for that to see what the spend down will be on the fund balance from where we end it with the budget amendment. So we would be able to say for supplemental resources, we are allocating $50,000 and then based on what the individual buildings need, and that's, that's just a random number, we can say, okay, Mr. Zitzer is saying these pieces cost this much, and then we're able to do that. And then we, you would see that when those line items begin to come. Those won't come until later. And so as I continue to have conversations with them and look at their data, we then define what those needs are. And so right now, what we're looking at is, does this resource support? Because one of the things, and I'll just use an example, the ECC, when we talk about the science of reading phonics and phonemic awareness are critical. And so does the resource that we purchase, even though it says it does, is it closing gaps better than foundations? Because remember, we remove foundations out of the budget because of the large purchase for the new resource. And so as the teachers give feedback to their principals and I meet with principals, they are sharing with me what the needs are, and then that information will come to the board. So hopefully that helps.
Yeah, I, I think, I think if we, I think, I think it's a sort of a. A balancing of like not making it too narrow, but not having it too broad. So I feel like, you know, when you explained sort of what the issue is with the curriculum now, like we were able to, we're able to tie in, okay, it's not that we're going to go out and find new curriculum resource, we're like, this is our resource, but it may not be meeting all our needs. So each school can identify how it is or isn't working. And it may be one school needs more, you know, it's not an even pot, maybe like, maybe the elementary school needs more and the high school needs less or, you know? So I think I'm on page with the idea of, I think we, I think we're all pretty clear and on the same page of like what our values are when we're budgeting, right? Like, so I'm on the same page of narrowing it enough, so we're sort of saying this is what we want to do next year, we want to try to do different without being too specific that you can't sort of explore what you need to do. Does that make sense?
It does. So how would you like for me, I did add in the note about, I struck through some of the language and noticed supplemental resources to AUGMIC programs that address identified achievement gaps with the focus on student groups or data that reveals. So that part I still think is accurate. Is there anything else that you would want to see in? I know, Brian, you indicated specifically for ELA and math. I will tell you that we have some science gaps, so that's why I didn't want to add in it just ELA and math, because the data is showing that we have some work to do at the middle school level there as well.
Yeah, I, my, my comment was, this was basically a copy paste from last year, and I just thought we resolved the last year one, so we should get a new budget directive this year. And if it's, if it's along the lines that you just stipulated, we need some new resources in the sciences, the elementary school around some reading and some of the tier two support. I mean, I think just kind of naming some of that and we want to explore what the prices, like Julie was saying, what are the costs for these? Can we, can we get a, a better sense of that?
It, it says academic gap closing programs. Are we only talking about curricular mechanisms or is it programs in general? Like, is it parent for teachers? I mean, that's kind of what I'm getting at, is it academic gap closing programs? That, that could describe many different things, but are what you really looking for is, is some supplement to curriculum that already exists?
Um, there are some. Yeah, sorry about that. There are some, that's a great question. Right now, we're still exploring high school needs. And so as I continue to meet with them, we just received our item analysis and schools have been reviewing that data. And so we're still new in it and they've only completed one benchmark to date. And so I can tell you what I know at this point and can bring back clarifications in preparation for the second read and maybe bring that information back. So I certainly can do that too, Trent.
Well, so it sounds to me like we're a little bit ahead of where the high school is in developing a request for programs that close academic gaps. Is that true?
I have not had my collab yet with Ms. Huffman, so I've had my. Yeah, I just have one more. I've had three of the, three of the four. And so. Hers is early part of next week.
So I, I think that's though where we get to the point of it's narrow enough. I mean, it's, it's just, it's not too broad, but it's not so narrow that we're not foreclosing opportunity for people to still identify. And it may be people might want to, it's sort of hard sometimes for me to change stuff in real, in real time. So it may be people, you know, may want to think about it and send comments. After, I don't, just wanted to offer that.
And I, I think we've given a sense, the sense of the sentiment of the board, I think the admin probably. Could make some, some headway on it.
I was just making tweaks so I can capture.
I, I certainly, you know, yeah, with, with the further context, I certainly would, would read, would not want to delete this as I had put in my original comment. There is a connection, of course, between this item and the next one, because the next one specifically mentions math and ELA. And again, I just thought, well, we, again, it's kind of from last year, but if, if we're going to, we might be able to consolidate items two and three.
So I kept that one in because remember, we, we, we got new resources for K eight. We have not yet completed that for the high school. And so we ended up revisiting, that's the work that Dr. McGee is doing currently and also is meeting with the science teachers. So that's why that one was kept in. So we've accomplished for K eight, but we have not completely for K 12. So Brian, hopefully that helps. And maybe I should.
Oh, so number, number three is supposed to be about the high school?
Uh, yes.
Oh, okay, I guess I missed that.
Okay, well, I didn't put it in, it's still, you, you made a good point, I just left it, but from your feedback, I can actually switch that to say nine, 12.
Sure. And I see number three adds, you know, additional things about professional development. You know, again. Yeah, so I, I don't think that's, that's a concern.
And those are the notes that I actually incorporated. So Katie had shared some notes at the last meeting. So again, this was my attempt to take the information that was shared by the board and massage it into what we have. So Katie, if that doesn't capture it, if you want to give me some feedback so I can take some additional notes, I can make adjustments.
And I thought we heard principal, I thought at our last meeting, we had our updates, there was talk about the need for, like, we, we did not build into our budget the additional resources it takes to implement a new, a new resource. So like, there is needed professional development around it, so we need to budget for that this year was, you know, and then the sub time for that and all that. So that, that one's fine by me.
But that was at K through eight, right? That wasn't.
Yeah, so it's, so, so for K through, but, but I think the lesson is going forward when we implement a new resource, so like for nine through 12, there will be additional costs we should budget in for the implementation piece. Like it takes professional development to learn how to do it, because it's a whole new program. And then when a teacher's out doing their professional development, you need a sub. So. I think that was sort of the lesson from, from the last budget item.
I mean, I, I would just hope, I mean, I, yeah, how, I don't know how professional development gets all scheduled, but it'd be ideal if, if they're going to do more professional development with this new curriculum, then they do have less time spent on other matters. Maybe that their professional development for next year for those teachers is more on that than on other things.
Yeah, is that, is that how they would, would do it? Would they sort of replace existing? So.
So they look at, so this year, when you saw the schools share their goals, they base the professional development where the gaps are. So for example, both the ECC and the elementary school are focusing in on small group instruction. The board did allocate funds for professional development for LINK and both of them are. And then that's scheduled to reduce the number of substitutes that are pulled out of the building at the same time. But they typically only plan professional development that's directly aligned. I think the missed opportunity for us is when having two resources at the same time and a reduction of professional development days, we really didn't anticipate the need for teachers to internalize. And that was actually identified on my instructional walks with the principals, hence the board's approval of the additional planned time. So I think sometimes you got to step into a pothole to figure out how to move forward. And that was a good learning opportunity as we move forward, thinking about the high school and additional shifts that we need to make for science.
For sure. Yeah, so I think with that wider context, then yeah, you, we should retain three, just make it articulate that it's primarily oriented around the needs of the high school.
Perfect. All right, and this was four. So Trent and Brian, I tried to incorporate some of your language there for the infrastructure. And then also, I believe Katie raised the need to reduce caseloads for students who need additional support for mental health. I will currently say that because of the increase in need at the elementary school, we had to split our social worker that was assigned to the ECC two days a week and then every other Friday to provide additional support. So any feedback in regards to what is there? And then what's beneath it is some of the recommendations, oh, sorry, guys, some of the recommendations that Brian sent in for the board's consideration.
I just had a question and I'm not, this doesn't mean like I'm opposed to this one or whatever, but do we have any, I noticed for like the other ones, we have some data points added to the agenda. Do we have any data about like the need here that we could add or just see, just to understand, have a better idea of like? What the need is? So like you said, for instance, we've had to move people, you know, to the elementary, does that mean like? Are, I guess just to understand the need, I didn't know if there was any data for that.
So in the board note, I included an update on the special education needs and that does not include students who are supported through 504s. And so students who have 504s are actually supported through district staff and not special education staff. The increase, and you'll look at those numbers for the elementary school is requiring a great deal of time, not only for special education staff, but also for MRH's staff. And so hence the move of the social worker over. So if you look at that data, it outlines the number of students who receive services through special education, also shows the caseload for those. And then if needed, I can also have events to provide the number of students who have 504s. And I will say that those numbers have increased since the pandemic, but I can provide that as well. But it'll be an idea. Okay.
Do we have any idea too, I guess, of the effects of special school district cuts on how that will affect our caseloads? Is that in there too?
They, that is not, I will tell you that I've been working closely with Dr. Macklin. We have not lost staff and they've been making cuts to staff at their central office level and then also looking at return on investment. So similar to when we look at data and say, hey, here's the impact of the intervention is our SCL teachers, they're doing the same thing. So we have not lost any staff. Right now, we do, I believe, have need for additional staff. But again, you know, they're experiencing a teacher shortage. So, you know, we've been filling those with support from other buildings and our director of special education, Emily, has been increasing her time over at the elementary school. But there, there is a need, and I would say primarily looking at the data, we've had an increase in students who have been diagnosed with autism, lots of neurodivergent needs there, in addition to students who have anxiety and depression, which require more work. We do have an embedded therapist there from Youth in Need who's fantastic, but the need surpasses the staff that we have in that particular building.
So just to clarify though, when we, so if we're looking at additional services, like these are not thing, I mean, the, the reality is like this is something that we will pay for, we will not get reimbursed from SSD. So this is, I just want to clarify, I think, because I, I do know SSD has laid off after the end of this year, a, a significant number of, of their employees. So. We probably won't get more people from them.
That is very true. I will say I do a pretty decent job of advocating as we continue to look at the caseloads. They actually had a meeting, Ms. Elam, Emily Kreisman, and also some central office SSD staff to talk about what those needs are. And the other piece that we're beginning to unpack are space needs because of the extreme needs and also thinking about the students who will be transitioning over for second grade. So Dr. Dietrich has been involved in those conversations and through our analysis on space, we'll have a report coming to the board here pretty soon to see if we're optimizing space. So I would say that this is probably more germane to the elementary school. And just kind of through this conversation, I think we don't need a counselor because we're in alignment with DESI's allotment for student to counselor ratio, but I believe we do need a full-time counselor at the, at the elementary school.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I'm interested in, in maintaining or possibly returning if we've lost. Uh, help in, in counseling and, and what the cost is associated with that. I. I mean. I'm, I'm kind of with Brian, it's maintain and, and increase as needed. I'm having a hard time just even digesting this whole paragraph.
Yeah, I, I think it's just a matter of, we just get a little bit more specifics. And so if the budget, if, if what the super, if the administration needs a budget directive that says. Please look at the hiring of another counselor at the elementary school, you know, that, that was, and we maintain all the other services as currently budgeted. That was kind of what I was looking for, like what, what is the? Yeah.
With Jenny, you know. What is the identified need?
It's a, it's a social worker. So through this conversation, that's why I struck out counselor. It is, it is a social worker. So we had to pull a social worker from the ECC in order to provide support at the elementary school. That then creates a deficit for the ECC because the social worker there was also supporting the pre-K side of the building. So the need there is a social worker in order to decrease the caseloads, which is what Katie had requested in the feedback that she provided.
Okay. I think directed in many of us definitely does, that's just explore what that cost would be, because I think that's worth adding, at least from my perspective. I've been in that building a few times this year volunteering and I can say that, yeah, there, there, I think that's, that's definitely a need for this, that group for, for whatever reasons, whether it's, you know, current climate, whatever, but that, that group is definitely suffering. And so I think we need to make sure that we have those supports there.
Agreed.
Yeah, can we get it down to about 10 words?
I will try my best, Trent. I could be a bit loquacious, but I will try.
I, yeah, this, I'm looking at this, this report helps under, understand it too. So I think once everyone looks at that, that sort of identifies the numbers of why there's a need to.
So the fifth one, I'm just going to keep that there. I can't recall who gave the feedback around equitable compensation scales with the line job descriptions. I think that might have been Katie. But then the feedback from. So that's five, I think we did that. So that's five, I think we did that high quality.
Yeah, so my, yeah, I, I, the feedback there is, it's not really changing what you've, what you have. Uh, in terms of the desire, you know, we need to set the equitable uh, administrative pay scales. I, I was actually kinda adding one point and that is, I wanted to, could we be specific? To communicate to the staff a commitment we have to giving them a salary increase in the next budget. That is at least keeping up with, if not exceeding inflation. And so I, I, you know, I, I don't know what the board wants to do. I put in a number, you know, two point seven five to three point two five. Which would be roughly in line with our revenue growth expectations.
So there, Brian, that's a good point. The current, um, so both for the support staff. And the teacher um, salary schedules, they currently have a two point seven five percent. Increase baked into those schedules. Are you saying in addition to the two point seven five percent?
No, no, that, that's what I just wanted to make sure that they knew we weren't cutting.
Okay.
There, yeah, I, yeah, yeah.
That's helpful. Thank you.
That we're committed, that we're committed to, to maintaining that. That's, that's what I was trying to get in.
And then the other clarifying question I would have, since the current schedule. Already has two point seven five percent included in, is the up to three point two five percent, meaning if the budget. Is uh, available, then we would add no more than, perfect. Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, I think like two point seven five is the floor and to the extent revenue projections permit. It looks like we're gonna have somewhere right around that two point seven five to three point two five percent. Revenue growth, maybe. I think if there's, it, we, we just, we got good news today on the property tax freeze when I was in that meeting this morning. Char, uh, Charles said that um, we, we came in two hundred thousand dollars better than we had budgeted. So um, so that's good for the district. So to the extent other good news kinda things come in. And we could do better than two point seven five. We're, we're, we're committed to, to at least that being the floor. But I thought that provided some more specificity that would communicate to the, the employees are. That that's what we want for the budgets.
So, so I like what. What Brian wrote and we spent last year, we, we really focused on teacher salaries. And so this year, I think maybe we focus on other salaries and that's kind of what, what this does. And then the other thing that might go into this is just recently got the, the um, information from the NEA. About um, what they think they wanna be negotiating. And so it might be a good thing to. There's a budget directive to come up with some pricing based on what the um.
I think.
The NEA is looking for.
We have to, we can't, I think we need to wait, we can't talk about that stuff as part of this. So I think that we'll have to, I think we won't know until later. Um, but I imagine that staff is aware that there might be increases due to that.
I will say Jenny, um, Tony is fantastic. Every number, when you sent me the information, I do have some numbers to share in exec for us to discuss. So. Um, just to give an idea of where we can kinda wiggle and I also have some numbers for support staff or from our support staff from our meeting as well.
Yeah, but at that point, Trent, at this point, that would not be a public conversation.
Yeah, I'm just saying, so, so we can't build in exploring some of the costs. I'm not gonna say any line items here.
I, I think we, because we don't know yet, like it, it is a negotiation that will happen in the future. But like, but like we said, I think, I think if staff is aware of what those possible requests might be, they can already be thinking about that.
Okay, so it, it just seemed like a place that we could drop, drop it in, at least to get some information in terms of a directive.
Before I move on, is that something that the board wants me to add? I would say that because it's part of the CBA and negotiations, Trent, that it shouldn't be. But if you want me to and it's the will of the board, I'd be more than happy to put it.
No, I, 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 I don't need it. I just thought that it might be a good place to do it. But it sounds like it's a, it's, we're not, we're not gonna talk about it until after, after speaking with the seat, with the teachers' union.
Uh, so the last item was fiscal responsibility. So I did change the title of that based on the feedback Trent, you and Brian gave. Um, so I said fiscal responsibility and long-term infrastructure planning. Tried my best to capture that. One of the things that was asked was for a flat uh, fund balance to be created. So Tony and I worked uh, collectively and looked at the fund balance starting from, I believe, uh, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. And then we looked at the analysis of where funds were inserted. So it appeared in twenty fifteen. The district had a tax levy increase. You saw an increase in the fund balance. And then of course with COVID. And the influx of ESAR funds, you saw the increase there. Um, and we did a analysis to say that thirty-five percent would be a good spot for a flat fund balance. And when we talk in executive session, I can give additional um, update on that. And I did have some preliminary numbers ran Brian by uh, Tony. Um, so to get to thirty-eight percent, uh, which um, is what you kind of shared at the bottom. It's uh, approximately, uh, I think he told me one point. It's a one point one million spin down to get to. A five percent decrease from where we currently are, um, based on the.
Which is forty, is it, are we at forty point three or something? That's what's projected for this year?
Yes, that's what um, we're projecting. He said, based on his numbers. If we wanted to spin down from that fund balance from the last amendment by five percent, it's about one point one. Million dollars, um, which actually would take us to thirty-eight percent and then the additional math to get us down to thirty-five percent. So based on some of the stuff that we are discussing in executive session, I would say that thirty-five percent, once you see the numbers is. Probably much more appropriate, but I am open to any feedback in regards to the uh, thirty-eight percent. Um, to forty percent, which Brian indicated. And we also started looking at what potential outputs would be needed to begin to build a capital expenditure fund. Um, but I did see the email that um, Dr. Dietrich sent as well with some information moving forward so we can use the reports from Port again and Clark to begin to plan out for that.
Can I ask a question? I guess, um, so. If we have money in a capital expenditure fund, is that included in the fund balance or is that a separate number?
It's included.
Okay, okay.
What, what email from Dr. Dietrich are you referring to?
It's a for our resources committee thing. He has sent it to the members of that committee, sorry. It, what it is is navigate, it, it, it came up at the last board meeting. Navigate said they could. Do a facility like master plan for us. Um, and, but you know, there's a cost to it. It would be paid out of the bond funds and we have to vote to approve that action item for them to do. It, um, but Mike had just sent to the for our resources committee, the more detailed, some more details about that, that's all. I think it's, you know, when we had our last meeting at the for our resources, the, the guy from Navigate uh, told us that, that um. You know, based on the condition of our buildings, we should be budgeting somewhere between four fifty and five hundred thousand a year. For maintenance. Um, and we're, we're pretty low on that. Uh, we're well below that at the moment. Um, so you know, maintenance costs, we probably need to add some more and that, that could be added to this budget directive. But one thing that we could do that would help us down the road is setting aside money when we have. Ex revenue, excess revenues like this year, we could be dropping some of that excess into a capital improvement funds. What that does. Um, the, the MSBA has like a little chart, I, uh, that they kinda send like why a district should do this. And it just, it, it kinda smoothes out the shocks to the system when a roof suddenly needs to be replaced. Or, you know, you have to go and buy a, 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 a new boiler system or something for a building. Uh, and, and we know for, for, for example, the next big purchase, well, the next purchase we'll need to make. That would be, be, would be just beyond the bond uh, expenditures is a roof for the central office building. That will, that roof is uh, reach its end of its useful life, we were told in five years. Well, that's about a fifty thousand dollar bill. We know that bill is coming in five years. Or we should plan for it. So you know, how can we start to think about that? How do we think about all the other things that are gonna be five years out, six years out, seven years out? So I, what, what the for our resource committee suggested, that's what I, and maybe Trent too, we, we suggested this be added. And I appreciate, you know, Dr. Jameson putting it in here. I would just wanted to be more specific about a dollar amount. Because we were, we were told that we need to have about five hundred thousand dollars a year for maintenance. Um, and maybe if we have that amount in the bank, it softens the blow on any one year when. We might not have as much money available for maintenance and we could draw on this fund to fix some of those problems.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna ask, uh, during the for our resources committee, uh, did you have conversation about the two million dollars we have in premium? Because that also uh, could be used, as long as we spend it within the timeframe, we can use it to offset. Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure that that was discussed.
Yeah, this is really like what, what that, what Mike was wanting to bring forward was like what beyond the bond spending timeline. What are some of the, the next big purchases we need to be aware of as a board? It's really kinda thinking, frankly, it's, it's us maybe doing something today. That a board five, the board five years from now will thank us for.
Yeah, and I think, I think, I think we all, I think we all get, or I mean, I, I got the idea, we sort of, most of us were in favor of that, if not all of us. But I guess is the directive then, maybe the directive is to determine how much, you know, what are the scenarios of? If we put this much money in, where does that leave us? If we, I mean, is that more of the directive then? We, we can't say put five hundred thousand in there if we don't. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I kinda like that Jenny. That's what I was thinking of. I, I, you know, this is my personal opinion as a board member, but I've always kinda hated that we, we target a certain percent fund balance. Because we really don't know where all these numbers are gonna come and hit, right? And so giving that directive really, I think, gives almost a, a scare to our, our teachers and staff. As opposed to saying that, you know, we're going to be flexible, but while being fiscal. You know, to, to being aware. And so I'd rather, I'd rather see this one be more along the lines of. Can we explore, you know, what this, this capital expenditure fund, you know, looks like? While keeping a fund balance that's, you know, reasonable, right? And I think, I think we're all aware that Rockwood didn't pass their, you know, current tax initiative. And so that should definitely put a scare into us that we need to work within our means, but. Dot, 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 you know, we still have to, you know, make this, make everything work, right? And so I, I really don't like, I've never liked where we say we wanna hit thirty-five percent or thirty-four percent. Because we really never know where these numbers are gonna go. So I'd rather it be more, let's aim for fiscal responsibility. And, and then, you know, when we start getting into the meat of actually looking at line items, then we see where that percent ends up.
I mean, I would like to maintain as high a fund balance as we possibly can. And so that's the goal is to maintain as high as we can and still do what we need to do. Um, the reason I like this capital expenditure fund or whatever it's called, I, I've seen several different names. Um, is that it, it will in the, in the future force the board to think about what are the capital expenses? Every single year and what sort of money needs to go into it and how much money came out of it in the past, in the previous year. So it is, it, it gets the board thinking about the infrastructure of the school on an annual basis. Instead of just thinking about it in terms of, you know, from one bond issue to another. Um, and, and doing, you know, lots and lots of projects under a particular bond and just letting maintenance go. I mean, I think that what I see in the district is that we've, we, we not paying enough attention on an annual basis to what we need. We're just putting things off until we can go back to the voters and, and have a bond issue.
So Dr. Jameson, does the thirty-five percent um, in the numbers you did, does it take into account having this sort of capital expenditure fund?
We uh, did a guesstimate based on the other numbers that will be provided. So in the modeling that Tony and I did, based on the information that was sent. Um, that we'll discuss later as well as the information. So I have, um, and then also taken into consideration. The increase for insurance. And so, you know, we still are kinda working through that. I have a meeting next week with uh, CSD Trust. We had a seventeen percent increase this uh, past year, um, which, you know, unfortunately, we give large raises. And it's being consumed by the increase in insurance costs. So we are exploring ways to. Decrease that cost for our staff so that they can actually realize the increases that the board is approving for them. Uh, but we do have a small cushion um, planned out for that um, as well.
So I guess hearing what, you know, I think, I think again, I don't, I guess I don't hear any, I don't hear anyone opposed to the idea of a capital expenditure fund. I mean, I think it makes fiscal sense. I think the question is, it's a, it's a tension with like, if, if it's included in the fund balance. You know, what? What is the other rest? Like Brian, I guess my question for you is, is that thirty-eight to forty or what, even if it's thirty-five? Is that what you want outside of having a capital expenditure fund or because it's included in that?
Yeah.
It just, I wanna understand.
Oh, well, it, they're two separate matters. They, they were just both uh, mentioned in this. So I just, that's why they're both still being talked about. They're two separate things.
Well, but what I heard Dr. Jameson say is the fund balance includes the amount held in that.
That's correct. Yeah, yeah. So if we put in half a million dollars, say, we, we wanna set that as a budget directive. But this year we could do half of that. We could maybe put quarter million of it in this year and maybe a quarter million next year. Um, you know, the, the point is yes, the overall fund balance hopefully doesn't drop. Yeah, well, uh, when, when you said a moment ago, one point one million dollars would take us down to thirty-five percent, I, I, it made me quite.
Thirty, thirty-eight percent.
Quite nervous.
It takes us to thirty-eight percent and I was saying the.
Oh, to thirty-eight, yeah, thirty, thirty-eight, yeah, cuz we're at forty, we're at forty. I think going down to, going down a little bit is understandable, especially if we uh, can also have some money in that expenditure fund. I didn't wanna go down to thirty-five. That sound, that's, that seemed like too substantial of a jump. That mostly because last spring, we approved a budget that projected revenue surpluses, not just for this year. But also for next year. And now we're talking about already doing it, some deficit spending and I'm, that just makes me nervous, that's all.
So I would say, um, based on if, when we have the other conversation, I can give more context so you can see where we are. Um, we are actually, and I think what I shared last year, one of the additions that we had is when I meet with staff and departments and also Tony. He gives me updates on expenditures. So come December, we compare what principals indicated that they would expand by this time. And whatever they have not expended, we take that money and we put it into a contingency account. And so that is how we were able to um, have an increase to go back into the fund balance. But I would say that we are in a really good spot right now. Uh, but I do think that some of the conversations that we will have will give additional context. I think thirty-five percent and even looking at um, the historical fund balance percentages. That's typically, it's been teetering around thirty to thirty-five percent. So I feel comfortable there. Um, and also looking at the things that are being asked for across the varying staff groups um, will play a part in that as well as. The addition of adding funds into the capital expenditure. So um. If I can ask, if I can add.
Usually, these numbers are, these numbers constantly change, these fund balance numbers. It's really a moving target. So it's, it's a, it, it's weird to pick a number here. But I, I guess I wouldn't vote for thirty-five. I would vote for thirty-eight. I wouldn't vote for thirty-five, but knowing that when this whole process is said and done. And.
Well, that's kinda what I was getting at, Brian. It's like, I, I would hate for us to like, say like, this is our, like, we're not, I, the seven of us, I think we're all gonna pick a different number. Right? And so why don't we leave this as more just fiscally responsible as opposed to directing a specific number?
I was, I just wanted to add, one thing I learned this week.
That's really what.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
No, no, you, you, you go ahead.
One thing I learned this week.
No, no, I'm just agreeing with you.
Create a capital expenditure fund that. One, one thing that I learned is that if you do create a, a capital expenditure fund, it looks like it may improve your bond rating. So we could potentially save money um, when we go to uh, raise funds for bonds. Um, and it, it, you know, and, and I just think it simplifies accounting. So that's just another benefit to it.
So what if we just, could I offer? So what if we just, could I offer, so, I mean, because I, I don't, I mean, I kind of agree with all of you. Like, I think we don't really know until we do the numbers. And like, we don't know that till we get further in. But like, you know, I'm fine with targeting, like, trying to target a, you know, 35%. But like, I think we all realize, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty right now in funding and whatever. So I think that's going to be fluid. And I think what happened last year is like, we get the numbers. And we also need to see, like, what are the projections ahead, right? Like, if we're at 35, but it's a whatever increase year, you know what I mean? So, I mean, is that palatable to you, Brian, like, in Trent? If it's like, we're targeting that as a maintenance, but we understand that might not be
Yeah, it's
Could be higher, could be lower.
Explore the amount that we need, which kind of Navigate already did to some degree. And then, you know, try to fund that fund and then maintain it on an annual basis to keep it topped up so that when you need it, you can spend it.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I see that as a different question than the fund balance generally. I think that's the problem, is that there are sort of two issues, but one is wrapped up in the other. So I think what we're saying is with that capital expenditure fund, we would like to target because that is also going to take away funds that we're using, right? So you might have to drop lower from 38 to 35 in order to create that fund.
It's not going to change the fund balance by creating this fund. It's just going to be in a different location.
Well, it is, in a sense, that you're taking funds out of
You're moving money.
So
Yep.
You know, if you're at 35, but you've put 300,000 aside, then that's, that's good. It's really like you're at 38 or whatever, because you have some money there.
It's like, you're at 38. Yeah, yeah, you're right, Jenny.
I mean, isn't, I think that the easy solution really is just to say that we're prioritizing creating the account, but that we're going to have to remain open as to how much is actually going to come in based on the needs of the district.
Yes.
Sure.
Maybe just to simplify things, maybe Dr. Jameson, you could just split these into two items. One could be about the capital expenditure fund. One could be about revenues and expenses. I mean, the fund balance percentage is just a proxy for how, what's the balance of revenue and expenses?
I certainly can do that. Thank you for the feedback.
And in the prioritizing creating the account, you talked about giving models back of what different spending, what different contributions to the fund would impact? So that, is that part of our directive, is to maybe look at models for a few different scenarios?
I can add that I have a couple already, and we're still building out. So that information will be included. So as we continue to build out, I had Tony to actually pull out the items that were the more costly. So salaries benefits, looking at insurance, also looking at a couple other things as well, based on the items that were already included in the budget directive. So I think once we're able to nail this down, we will be able to provide that information. And then I'm already working with Dr. Dietrich on getting a better grasp on what we would need to add in. Because right now, based on what we've already budgeted for the current projects, the For Our Resources Committee is prioritizing other projects. But I do not believe that they have yet, and Brian or Trent, you can correct me, prioritize what that 2 million premium will be spent on. Because that also can address some of the additional maintenance needs that are included in the report that Courtigan and Clark provided, which would then help us in some way as we think about adding money in, depending on where we land based on the other expenses.
Yep, correct.
All right. Does anyone have any other, any other thoughts? I think it was a nice, robust conversation about it.
And what I'll do, Jenny, I didn't want to change anything. I will have Cat to PDF this one after the meeting and add it. And then once I try to clean it up, we'll put the new one on with a new date, if that's okay.
That sounds perfect.
Perfect.
All right. Does anyone, anyone have anything else? Nope. No, wait, nope, no. I moved to enter executive session in accordance with Section 610.021, subsection nine and section 610022 of the revised statutes of Missouri on November 6, 2025, for the following specific reasons, personnel matters.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor? I
I This is a roll call?
Oh, you're right. Okay, you are correct. Thank you, Loretta.
Yes, hi.
Josh?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jenny, yes. All right. Thank you, Loretta. All right, we'll see you guys in a minute.